I'm going to say the mayor is here. Mayor, do you have anything you want to add?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. I just want to take just a minute and again echo the thanks to both of you, Scott and Phil. It's really kind of the end of an era, right? I mean, nine years each. We're losing 18 years of experience in one fell swoop, and that's going to be hard to replace. But at the same time, others will step up and learn what you've learned. But thank you so much. And Phil, I've known you for many years. It's kind of fun to see Jamie pop in and out of the mountain there.
We go back a long, a long time, Blair. We were both just regular employees, I think, when we first met.
We're just regular people, and look at us now.
Yeah, exactly. Where'd your hair go?
You were smart enough to bail out of politics before I was, but anyway. So Phil, thank you again. Thank you very much. And I know that
My pleasure.
I know you do have a good woman behind you there that I see in the picture there. But and Scott, again, thank you. I just can't express enough. The five years I spent as the fire marshal for the city, I attended all the planning commission meetings. And I just, I learned then that that's probably the toughest job in the city and maybe the most thankless. But at the same time, I know, and I've talked to Phil about this from time to time, how gratifying it has been. And you really did have an opportunity to leave your fingerprint on the city. And being a citizens group, you literally represent the citizens of the city. So thank you especially to you two tonight. But thank you all of you for the time and effort you put in on behalf of the city.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure. It really has. I have enjoyed this immensely. It's been, for me, it's been a great opportunity to kind of stay in touch with the city and know what's going on. And it just, it's been very satisfying for me as well. And I will miss it, but at the same time, nine years is a long time and change is good. And this is good change.
Yeah, I'll miss it too. It's, it has been good. I started telling my kids tonight at dinner. I said, we all should serve in the, in the city, you know, and be involved. And my daughter's like, you're going to give a speech? I'm like, no. You know, so you know what kind of respect I get at my house. I'm the Rodney Dangerfield of the planning commission, I guess. But no, it's, it's great. I think I've learned a lot. It's great to be involved in the city. I find myself driving around looking for code violations and, you know, telling my brother who bought a house in another city, he needs to make sure he knows the accessory dwelling unit policy of that city. So I'm a little nerdy, I guess, in that, but it's, it's fun. And it's been great to serve with everybody and be involved. And, you know, I know Jake Pearson very well. I think he'll do a great job. And anyway, it's great. You know, Phil lives around the corner, so I can still see Phil and, you know.
We'll still talk. Yeah, there's, there's plenty to talk about, about what's going on up on the hill there.
Yeah.
And we don't mean the legislature, Mayor. We mean the University of Utah.
The most, the most important hill, you know, and
It's the highest hill.
Exactly. And then, and then, you know, once, once we start meeting in person again, then, you know, Phil and I will come back and be Statler and Waldorf.
We would expect no less than that, you know. That would be so fun, Scott. That would, that would be hilarious, wouldn't it? If they, if we could attend live and just sit back in the back and, and just grump and heckle and guffaw.
We will, we will, and we'll make comments on every issue, every issue. But I guess just last thing I would say is I'm really grateful that we actually did bring up, you know, chickens last week. So, you know, sending me out on the right, the right term or last meeting, you know, we did the chicken. So if I only could have done Tiny Homes, then I would have felt fulfilled. But I know that's, that's tough, so.
Well, like Melinda said, we got you guys a couple of plaques. I'm holding up Phil's. I'll pre-sanitize and re-box it for you before we send it off to you, Phil. Just a little, a little something and then a card for you all. And Scott, I was outvoted. I wanted yours to say Scooter Woodbury on it.
No, that's fine. As long as it doesn't have two Ts, I'm okay.
Ah, man, we put two Ts.
I've got a chisel. I can just chisel off the second, the second T.
We really, we really appreciate you guys. And I just was going to say quickly before we need to get on to the rest of the, the pre-meeting. It's the great thing about a commission or the most important thing about a planning commission, in my humble opinion, is the dynamic of the group. And you never, I've never had a planning commission that has this good of a dynamic, this solid of a rapport with each other and everybody fitting certain roles and, and doing a really good job of balancing each other out in terms of discussion and consideration and everything. And we're going to miss, we're going to miss you guys a lot. So there's not enough on a plaque or in a few minutes that we could say that would really express how much, how the hours and hours and hours and the abuse that you take and the having to listen to me drone on and on and on and try to beat you into submission with my words. So thank you. Thanks for being a part of this. And when we're delivering packets in that area, I'll drop by and talk some more, so.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
Jared, was that, was that greasy pizza fingerprints on that plaque? Are you having the pizza party without them?
There's no pizza.
Yeah, because you ate it, Jared.
I was very careful. I ate all of the pizza before this started.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Should, should we get on with the, with the pre-meeting, folks?
Yes, please do.
All right, let's do that. Mayor, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll watch this later at my, my convenience.
So you can speed through all of the BS. Yes, good, good idea.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Well, with that, we'll, we'll open the pre-meeting for the January 7th, 2021, Planning and Zoning Meet of Murray City. So I guess I'll go through who's here. I'm Phil Markham, the chair. Scott Woodbury, the vice chair is here. Travis Nay, Aaron Patterson, Sue Wilson, Ned Hacker, Lisa Mokavich are all here from the PMZ Commission. And we have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, and I'm not sure if Melinda is sticking around. Probably not. Oh, Melinda is here. It's a light agenda, and so I wasn't sure if you would stay, Melinda. So with that, we'll, we'll get started on the pre-meeting and look at the agenda. I've got a copy of the opening statement on the back of the agenda, so thank you for that. And we've got approval of minutes tonight, the Thursday, December 17th, approval of minutes. Hopefully, you know, everybody had a chance to look at that. Were there any glaring omissions or that that we need to talk about before the general meeting?
No glaring, but I found a couple.
Okay, let's, let's bring them up and correct them now, and then we can just move through.
Page 14.
That sounds scary.
I know. Well, there are a lot of public comments.
Yeah.
Page 14, the fifth paragraph down, one, two, three, the fourth sentence. I think that should be Mr. Woodbury. Right?
Instead of just "far" Woodbury, it's just missing an M.
Yeah, these are, these are nothing. So
Oh, that's
The same paragraph.
Without my M, I'm only half a man.
In that same paragraph, the second to the last line, starting with city council. This is just a cute comment. It says, giving out to citizens that lays out what's required. So I thought that was a good word to have in there since we're talking about
Lays, yeah, yeah, very true.
The one other spelling on page 16, the second paragraph, third line, said, Mr. Hall said the registration process makes sense.
Yep.
That's it. Good job. That's, I mean, that's, those are nothing corrections, so.
Yeah, for 17 pages of minutes, that's, that's pretty remarkable.
You're great. Thank you for that work.
All right. Conflict of interest this evening. Anybody thinking that they've got any issues with conflict of interest they need to explain?
So, yeah, normally I, for the last couple of Intermountain Healthcare things, I've said conflict of interest. I'm over that. So I just don't think that the decisions I talk about, especially relating to pedestrian walkways, has anything to do with my employment, and it's not going to influence me one way or another. So I will, when you call for it in the meeting, I will say that I work for Intermountain Healthcare, but I don't see a conflict of interest.
I think that, yeah, that's more than appropriate, and, and I couldn't agree more, Travis. So, very good. All right, we have no findings of fact this evening, so we'll take a look at the regular agenda. The first one is a conditional use permit for IHC/TOSH, a new ambulatory surgical center. So who will be doing this one?
I will be presenting both of them tonight.
Okay.
This one as well. So this is, I'll be real quick, and we can, we can talk about any questions you have. It's, it's a new building in the kind of the northeast corner where there's a large parking lot. It's 44,100 square feet, two stories, two levels. It's an ambulatory and recovery center. So the first floor is an ambulatory surgical center. As you know, it's orthopedic stuff at the hospital, so it's an ambulatory surgical center. And then there are some rooms on the second floor for recovery, for those patients who opt to stay in that same building and recover rather than move somewhere else or that are not able to go straight home. The applicants could tell you more specifics, but it's, it's very sort of, the recovery part of it's very sort of light duty. It's almost elective. If you can afford it and you want to take the time and spend it there, you can go there and stay the night or whatever, and then go home after. That's the purpose of it. So the, the patients that would be there would have already been at other parts of the hospital. They'd just be served in this surgical center instead. It does remove some parking. It replaces that parking and then a few stalls to boot. Parking overall on the site, we did an analysis a number of years ago, and it's, it's very well parked. We're not concerned about there being a parking crush as a result of this. As you can see, there's a whole big field that we could add parking to if we really need to. It's just not really needed. The other thing you want to be aware of is the, there is an access planned for the east side of the building, northeast corner. And if you look in your conditions of approval, the engineering division had concerns with the way that lined up, or more appropriately said, did not line up with Hillside, and they'd like it either removed or maybe lined up with Hillside. If the applicant selected to line it up with Hillside, if, if you want to leave that condition alone, they would have to work that out with the engineering division and make sure that it worked. And Trey's confidence level, Mr. Stokes, the engineer's confidence level that it could be lined up is, is sort of here and there. He's like, it's probably better just removed, but we might salvage it.
It's always been a strange intersection, you know, even before it got modified to its present configuration. It was, it was convoluted.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I don't know how you fix a bad intersection by adding something to it.
Yeah, it, it might be just removed, and that's why that condition is that way. You wanted to leave the possibility open. If they can come up with something brilliant with them, then great. But if not, it just needs to be removed. That's, well, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I want to tell you about that. Any questions about this particular conditional use permit?
Was there any public comment concerning it?
Good question. Erin Abeta, that lives on Hillside, owns the home directly across from this northeast corner, called me after he got his notice. I worked with Erin on a variance a couple of years ago, so I know him. We, we spoke about it. He has some concerns. He, I mentioned his concerns in the staff report. He's the phone call that I mentioned. He's actually registered to speak tonight to raise those concerns as well. He's worried about it affecting the property, the residential kind of quiet value, et cetera, and then the traffic. And he did not like that access as well, so. And then we did receive one email that I'll read into the record. We got it too late to put in your packet, so I'll read. It's a lady who owns a property north of the site and has some concerns about similar concerns. I'll, I'll read that into the record. So we just had those two comments.
Okay, great.
Jared Cash, a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Space in that intersection and who's owns that intersection? Could it become a roundabout or is the, not going to be discussed?
That's a good question. Has not been discussed. I guess that could be one of the things that they would talk about potentially with the engineer, but that's, yeah.
The reason I ask is that, who does that? Is it the city? Is it the property owner? Who, who has the ability to do that?
Well, it's city right of way. Those are public rights away. So if we were going to, if their solution were to be, we want to see if we can make this a roundabout with some of the land that's there. I'm just eyeballing it. There's probably not room. You need, generally speaking, to take property from adjoining properties to create a roundabout. And I think it would, with the two properties that are at the corners of Hillside and 5770 along with this, you'd need to put a lot of that roundabout on their, on their site. And so they can look at that, but there's probably not a lot of space for it that you'd think. Not to line it up where it is currently, anyway. There's some city property just south of the intersection that's used for drainage and utilities in it. So I don't know how we could use that either. That's a question that didn't really
And, and you know, a complication there, Jared. There's, there's a water well on that site.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's, it's going to be, you know, you, you start encroaching on wellhead territory and that, and it's super complicated.
You don't get to, basically, on the wellhead property. Well, well, protection's important. So there's probably not room for roundabout. They could explore that, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
It's a good question.
All right. Well, let's move on to the next, the next item, a subdivision review item. It's Abing, Abing, Abington subdivision amendment, a lot line adjustment for lots one and four. And this, I have to be honest, Jared, this, this kind of amazes me that we've got to deal with this.
It, it is kind of funny. The state codes are pretty, are pretty clear. If, if there are platted subdivisions, we can look at it and do most of the work. But in the end, we got to put it in front of the commission as the landowner's authority to say, yeah, you did, you're doing the right thing.
Well, and having to do a lot line adjustment for a trash enclosure?
Yeah.
You would think there would be other options available for a trash enclosure to, you know, to avoid going through this.
Yeah, like move it.
You would. Well, that was, and it started its life out in the site planning on the right property. It's just the significantly enough to have to come back to you all. It didn't like reduce parking or change flow at all, but it moved some parking and then kind of shifted where the, where some electrical equipment was going versus this trash enclosure. And it wound up being, they, they didn't even realize it until they were laying out pads for it and said, oh, look, this is going to be off of this survey line. Is that going to, and Abington, the people that are going to own that lot are different people, and they want their trash enclosure on their lawn. So they're going through this process.
So that's, and that's pretty much the item that we just
The item. Like 1,100 square feet to move for the enclosures. Doesn't, doesn't affect anything at all.
All right.
I just got one thing on that, Phil. I, in my packet, the property owner's affidavit is blank. Does that matter?
That's interesting. I didn't notice that.
Huh. I don't, I don't think it really has, you know, a significant bearing on any action we take, Sue.
I tried to hold it up, but my camera doesn't pick it up, so.
Yeah.
Mine's blank too. I think they all are.
Okay. So we don't need to worry about that?
Oh, you can just fill it out, Sue, and then you're the owner.
Sweet.
Once again, it's the school district. I feel like we're always like, do they know? Do they know?
Yeah, they're, they're leasing the property, yeah.
They're leasing the property out.
But do they know that we're moving their dumpster?
I believe they do. I'm just looking for the application right now. So your guys' is blank. Yeah, I scanned that in, and I probably scanned the wrong one in. I know we have a, a signed one. I'll look for that while you're talking about other things.
All right, great. Well, Jared, while, while we've got a couple of minutes, if everybody's okay with this, I just, I just have a couple of general interest questions for you, just noticing things, you know, going on and stuff. You had previously mentioned to me in one of our conversations that there might be something going on at the Shopko building on State Street. However, I noticed across the street at the Toys R Us, there's a remodel underway. I was just curious what's going on there.
Is Toys R Us, and you guys, Zach and Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, Toys R Us is where the Swedish furniture place is going? Is that right, Zach?
Yeah, there's a furniture company called Scandinavian Designs that
Oh, okay.
Building permit over there, I think, almost a year now. I noticed the other day when I was up in Ogden, they have opened one up on Riverdale Road by the In-N-Out Burger. But I'm surprised it's, it's taken this long. I assume they've maybe been focusing on the store up there in, in Riverdale and maybe some delays with the pandemic, but we issued a permit on that. It was last spring, so hopefully they'll be getting really close to finalizing the renovations and opening the store.
Awesome. No, that's great. You know, a new, a new store, a new commercial enterprise is what we need here in Murray right now, and that's somewhat unique. So that's great to add something like that to the mix.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can Google, um, Scandinavian Designs and, and look at what they have to offer. It's a, you know, I mean, very Scandinavian, a lot of kind of mid-century modern style. It's really, really great. I mean, I look forward to them opening. I want to go and take a look.
Great. All right. Well, good. I can't remember the, the other one that I, I saw something was going on. But if anybody has any comments or questions, we've got a couple of minutes before we break to go into the general meeting.
Is there any movement on the Shopko property? On Shopko?
Are we meeting? I think we have a meeting scheduled with them soon about something going on.
We've kind of been hit and miss with trying to get a meeting scheduled with them through the holidays. So I think they're looking at some options, and other than that, I couldn't tell you more. We haven't had any meetings with them.
What did the council say about, about the sports mall and, and RC Willie? It didn't go well.
Travis is turning me to cry. Let the record show.
Did they turn them both down?
It was the committee, the whole. It was, it was at their work session essentially last, night before last. So they, they weren't scheduled to vote until the 19th, Melinda? Is that right?
Yeah, the, the work session was Tuesday night, and there was a lot of comments about concerns with that zone and maybe it not being the right zone or the right vision for Murray. There was concerns about the density and parking and traffic and impacts to services. Actually received a request from both parties, both applicants, the sports mall and the boyer company to delay the public hearing. So we've sent that request on to the council, and we'll see what happens with that. But the most likely outcome is that we won't, the public hearing won't be held on the 19th, and they'll be given a different date for that, as the applicants have requested that.
How's the town hall coming along?
Oh, the city offices?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, city.
Yeah, so City Hall is, they're working over there as diligently as they can. The great news is the building permit for the new cell phone tower was finally released on December 22nd. So they're actually working on that site right now and getting some of the, you know, the groundwork ready there. And we anticipate that'll take a couple of months. So late in construction, in the meantime, has been working over there on City Hall, working around the current cell phone tower as much as they can, so they don't lose more time with the delay of the cell phone tower. But it's, it's going well over there. Obviously, the weather has been favorable, and that helps out. Hanover Street, I think, is nearly complete now, so.
I, I do a pretty much almost a daily drive on my lunch hour, actually, over there. And today they were installing streetlights, so.
Okay.
It's, yeah, on Hanover. It's looking really good. And they've started a, a second floor core of the, of City Hall.
The elevator chamber?
Yeah, the elevator chamber, and then the stairs that are kind of closer to your office, Melinda.
Okay.
That, they've started the second floor of that as well, too.
Yeah, so that big concrete box that, that you see there on the site is the, the, I don't know if it's chamber or vault or what the correct term is for, but that's the chamber that the elevator will be going through.
So my kid's daycare is right there, so I, too, stop by every single day, weekday. And there, so the cement box, I told, the kids have been guessing every day what they're building. They thought it was the jail. I was like, hmm, not sure. So the rectangle box is the stairwell. I didn't know if that one wall is
That's, that's a stairwell right there. That one, that one wall, it's a stair, it's a stairwell that will butt up to some offices.
Yeah, the shaft, that's what it is, right? It's an elevator shaft, I think, is the correct term. There we go.
Elevator box, that works.
Yeah, so you know, that, that, that whole elevator, right, is going to be encr- or encased in concrete, and that's, that's what they're building right now. So that's really what you see coming out of the ground is the, the big concrete box that will carry the elevator through the three stories.
Okay, well, you know what? It's, it's 6:30, so let's close the, the pre-meeting. Does anybody need a, a break for just a minute before we, we move into the regular meeting?
I think this meeting has potential to compete for the shortest meeting, Phil, so.
Let's, let's, let's go ahead and dive right in, then we'll, we'll do that if everybody's ready. Zach, I assume you're, you're good to go. There has to be one, there has to be some reason that you're here, right?
I'm the master of ceremonies, so, you know, I just keep things moving along.
The ringmaster as it were.
Yes.
All right. Well, with that, I would, I would like to welcome everyone watching this evening to the January 7th, 2021, meeting of the Murray City Planning Commission. And before we get started this evening, I've got a couple of things that I need to read. As the chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Phil Markham, have determined that due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel, novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-207, paragraph four, allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public has an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We're holding tonight's planning commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the planning commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.com. That, we will talk a little bit about procedure for tonight. Again, I'm Phil Markham. I'm the chairman. With us this evening, we have a full commission with us. Scott Woodbury, the vice chair, is here. Travis Nay, Aaron Patterson, Sue Wilson, Ned Hacker, and Lisa Mokavich. Jared Hall from Planning Department is, is assisting us this evening, as is Zach Smallwood. And we have Melinda Greenwood here as well. Bryant Farnsworth, the Assistant City Attorney, is watching in to make sure that we don't get too far down any rabbit holes tonight, and we appreciate him. And so with that, I would like to go over just a little bit of procedure before we start. As we, we have a couple of general business items that we'll deal with first this evening. They won't take very long. And then we will have two items on our general agenda this evening. One is a conditional use permit from IHC/TOSH, and the other is a subdivision review for Abington subdivision amendment. And when we have these items called up for discussion, city staff will present these to us. We'll have a chance to ask them any questions or clarifications on each one of them. Then we will give the applicant a chance to add any additional information that they see fit. After that, we will ask for public comment from anyone that would like to submit comment. Comments are limited to three minutes, and we'll take email or live video participation as well if you have pre-registered with staff, so they can allow you in. And also, let's see, after, after that, we'll, again, bring it up for discussion and be open for a motion and settle the agenda item, either approve or, or deny. So with that, we'll, we'll move to our first business item, approval of minutes. And in the packet this evening, we have the minutes for the Thursday, December 17th, 2020, planning commission meeting. In our pre-meeting, we had a couple of just very minor grammatical changes that we discussed, and those have been noted. Is everyone on the commission had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any changes or alterations you'd like to make? Okay, seeing none, I would, I would Okay, seeing none, I would, I would move for a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the December 17th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting with the minor changes that were discussed in the pre-meeting.
Thanks, Scott. Do I have a second? And Lisa? I have a motion by Scott Woodbury, a second by Lisa Mukavich, to approve the, the minutes of the December 17th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Conflict of interest? Do any members of the commission this evening have a, a conflict of interest with either of the two items that will be up for discussion?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I don't, I don't have a conflict of interest, but I do want to just, you know, publicly state that I'm an employee of Intermountain Healthcare.
Okay, thank you very much, Travis. And we, we've been aware of that in the past and we appreciate your, your transparency on this matter. We do not have an approval of any findings of fact this evening, so we will skip that. And we will move right into our first item on the agenda, which is a conditional use permit for IHC slash Tosh. It is a new ambulatory surgical center to be located at 326 East, 5770 South. And Jared, would you present this to us?
I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Did I just, okay. Zach, if you could enable me to share my screen.
That's why he's here.
That's why he is the master.
Yes, I am, I apologize. You should be able to.
Okay, can you all see the Planning Commission slides?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So as Chairman Markham said, this is.
Actually, let me interrupt. We could see your screen, but now, but now we see something else.
Now, how's that?
Perfect. Yes, great.
That's all right. I just have to have it on the other screen, so it's just how it goes. I'll live. The, the application is for a conditional use permit, site plan review, to allow a new building. It's a 44,100 square foot building on the IHC Tosh property at 5848 South Fashion Boulevard. As you can see on the slide there, it says that it's the new Ambulatory Surgical and Recovery Center. Surgical and Recovery Center. The property, the Tosh, the Orthopedic Specialty Hospital, the old Cottonwood Hospital. It'll always be the Cottonwood Hospital. Me, four of my kids were born here. So this is the corner. You can see the, the corner up here where there's large parking area. And then just a little bit into this field is the project area. Again, this is hospital zone. It's the only space left in our city that is zoned for hospital. And this is, again, this is kind of outlining where that project area falls. Around it, you have some single families, some general office and CD. You can see State Street is here. This is the site plan. This is a kind of an undisturbed portion of the property. We can look at in the next slide as well. But again, this is a 44,100 square foot building. There are two levels. The bottom floor is the surgical center. The top floor is the recovery part of it. And again, this is, this portion of the property where this parking is extending into is is currently that field. And the next slide will make that a little more clear. This is the demolition proposed. As you can see, this part of the property is undisturbed, those parking stalls and that landscaping remains. But all of this asphalt will be torn out and then the limits of the, of the new extension go right into there. So on this other colored site plan, you can kind of see that very well. I did want to point out on this, on this particular site plan, we're looking at just really quickly. They've done a fair job of, of trying to connect the parking areas to the building with some, some well-identified sidewalks that go through landscaped areas instead of having already trucked through the parking lot. Appreciate that a lot and then getting people around the building. This is kind of the main parking area for the, the building itself. You have entrance and discharge from the building on this west-facing side. And then this east-facing side is the quieter side, more employee parking and the employee entrances to the building up here on the, on the east side. As I mentioned, that surgical center on the, on the ground floor, that accounts for, let me see, 32,600 square feet of the building are that ground floor. The lower floor is larger than the upper floor. The upper floor is only about 11,000 square feet. One of the main things that we talked about in, in reviewing this as a planning review group were the accesses. And this did come up and was a slight concern. There's a lot of good connections from the existing hospital site. It's, it's really well-connected internally. And then there are two proposed entrances from 5770 South that runs along the north edge of the property. This further west connection is, is fine. It lines up well with the interiors and everything. The engineering division did call out this northeast access for either removal or better alignment with Hillside Drive in some way. We talked about this a little bit in the pre-meeting, but it's probably more likely that it would need to just be removed. It may not be, we may not be able to correct the problems that kind of already exist at that intersection. But Trey Stokes, our engineer, didn't want to take that completely off the table. He's willing to work with them to see if there's some way to make that legitimately work, but it may just need to be removed. So, but again, the rest of the parking is, is well circulated. It's well placed within the, the larger site. And again, this is that main floor. It's the larger floor, the 32,000 square feet. You have operating rooms, surgical rooms, prep rooms, clean rooms and various staff facilities and the entrance to the building, et cetera, the lobby. And then that upper floor, again, this is kind of the limit of the upper floor. This is not, not floor space that's open, open to that first floor roof. So this is the smaller upper floor, 17,000 square feet. It's just recovery rooms. And again, these are sort of lighter duty recovery rooms. It's not, not intended for long stays, one day, two days, for people who are, are having surgeries in that ground floor. Most of these people would be patients from the site already, so we're not anticipating a lot of new, new traffic into the site as a result of this. Parking is appropriate. We've looked at parking all over the site. Don't have any concerns. They're replacing most of the parking that gets removed from this and, and it does meet the parking requirements that we have for this type of facility. A couple of elevations for you to look at. These are renderings of the, of the elevations. This is the main entrance on the bottom here that you're seeing. So the, the west side, you have discharge over here and the main entrance to the building. Another view of that kind of at an angle here and here. The architectural elevations were in your packets. The renderings do a nice job of showing the materials better, though. It, it looks like the rest of the Tosh Hospital campus and fits in well. So we're, we're, the staff's recommending that the materials used are appropriate. And we are recommending that the conditional use permit should be approved with the five conditions that you see again, including that one that we called out. The others are pretty standard. We do have some landscaping on the site, some that's not being disturbed, some new land that reflects the, the specific requirements of 17.68, where we just need to count all the shrubs and things and make sure that it meets those conditions, but we can do that at the building permit stage. You have any questions for staff at this point?
Jared, can, can you tell me the, the height of the building and how that relates to the, the surrounding structures other than the, you know, the, the very tall IHC clinic?
Yeah, the, the tall clinic in the middle of the site, let me just kind of back up to the overall site plan. So the tall building on the site is really here at the main, the main hospital clinic, right? The new building here is 33 feet tall. It is two stories, but because they're hospital stories, we have a 33 feet overall height. Hospital zoning will let you do 35 within 100 feet of, or as long as you're at least 100 feet away from residential zoning. You can get a little taller than that for every four feet you get from residential zoning. This is 110 feet at the closest, so it's appropriate for height.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can we go back to the pedestrian network?
Yes. Is that one worth?
So my, that's perfect. So my concern with how, the way they have it laid out right now is that people are going to be leaving the ambulatory center over into the main hospital for the pharmacy, for the cafeteria, for other areas like that. And humans being humans, you're going to take the most direct route, which is going to take you directly through the parking lot to get into that other entrance. It seems silly that, that the eastmost sidewalk is not moved further west to give a more direct route. And these are also orthopedic patients and they're not going to want to go out of their way in the circulation. They're going to want to take the shortest, most direct path over to rehab or whatever they might be doing in the main facility. So I would just recommend that you consider something with that sidewalk connection right there and, and how to, yeah, how to make that a more direct path to the front entrance of the hospital. Because humans being humans, they're going to cut that every single time because it's the shortest, quickest, easiest way to do it.
Yeah, I think that's a great comment, Travis. Thank you. Yeah, they're not likely to walk up to there and come across.
Any other questions or comments before we hear from the applicant? Okay, all right. Go ahead, Jared.
Oh, I was just gonna say I'll stop sharing so you can all see each other, will you?
Okay, no, that's, that's great. Is, is the applicant with us this evening?
If I could just have the applicant raise their hand and I'll unmute you and all that fun stuff.
Looks like Monty's here twice, so.
Hello, this is Casey with E4H. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Thank you for being here. Can, can I ask you to state your name and, and address for the record, sir, before you begin?
This is Casey Carlton with E4H Environments for Health, architect for the project with, with Intermountain Health.
All right. Well, thank you for being here. Is there any additional information that you would like to add? And if you could, if you could address the concern of, of Mr. Nay with the, the sidewalk?
Sure, a couple of those things that, that I'll start with that one and then maybe even tie back to the, the question or concern about the, the parking and, and the entrance drive off of 5770. The, one thing to note is that these surgery patients are not tied to the hospital. They are two totally separate entities. This, this, the surgery center will be a separately licensed, it's a partnership between Intermountain Health and the physician group. And they really don't much cross coordination in terms of day of, day of surgery type thing. So there really is not any, any anticipation of patients or maybe not even too often family members going between the two buildings. The, the primary use of, of the space between the two, from a pedestrian standpoint, would be the physician group. And that's why the, the pedestrian sidewalk is kind of oriented the way it is to give a good connection to where those physicians and other staff can go from the, thank you for bringing up that plan. You can see on the, kind of the southeast corner of the building there, that connects really well over to where they have their clinic space in especially hospitals side over there on the kind of the east side of the campus. Don't anticipate much. The patients are kind of pre-admitted. They come in day, day of, ready for surgery. They might stay, you know, at most a day or two in the recovery care center that's on the second floor.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back just a little bit on that simply because of my experience of working at facilities and understanding the way medical facilities work. You have support staff that work over there that are going to be walking over to the cafeteria for lunch. Yes, you have physicians that'll be going over to the clinic, but you also have family members that are going to be sitting around for four or five hours, maybe for a day or two. They're going to be over in the hospital. They will be using services within that facility. There is no question about that. And the support staff will be using those same facilities as well. So I, I really encourage you to consider that. I spend my entire career walking around Intermountain Healthcare facilities. I, I know what I'm talking about when I, when I bring it up.
Yeah, those are good points and we will explore that, that pedestrian connection there to make it as safe and direct as possible.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicant at this time?
I guess I have one. I'll bring it up. Commissioner Mokel brought this up earlier as far as what to do with the intersection there on the northeast corner. And, and I don't know, Casey, if you can, can talk a little bit more about that? If the connection to the street closes, if you would even consider thinking about perhaps putting in a, a roundabout on that intersection. It may take a fair amount of property. And if this facility would give up some of that property, I don't know if it'll fit, but it's a, I think it's a good, good suggestion. Good, good thing to inquire and, and just look into a little bit more.
Yes, I would like if someone is able to bring up that site plan, that rendered site plan again, can speak to that. So the, this entrance on the northeast corner is primarily for, for the delivery trucks. So the come off 5770 with a full-size truck being able to make the turn into the backside of this facility. You can see the loading dock that's at the southeast corner of the building. It's really to give them really good direct access to the, the back of that building, be able to back up into the loading dock and then continue out over to Fashion Boulevard. Pushing that entrance further to the east to align with, with the other road there. It, it would make for a much wider turn for a full-size truck to be able to turn and get back into there. And so we, we have done some sketches to see if we made that alignment. It can work. And, and it actually doesn't impact our overall parking too much. So if there's, if there's really a strong need to align there, we can, I think we can accommodate that. The roundabout, I think that might be, maybe go, you know, with your recommendation, we would, we would take that into consideration. But I think it might be a little too much given how little that entrance would be used. It'd primarily be for, you know, even if with a sign there that says loading or service truck entrance or something like that. You know, the staff are still probably going to use it, but it'll get pretty low use.
Well, and ultimately that decision will be with the, the city engineers. So I'm sure our comments will be on the record and hopefully, you know, it'll take all this into consideration. But, but the final decision does rest with him.
Yeah, we'll be able to explore any options that, that are necessary.
Mr. Carlton, before we get too far, I do need to ask you if, if you have read all of the conditions attached to this application and, and are, are you willing to accept those?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
I have read those and we are.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant from commission members right now before we go to a public comment? Okay, well, seeing none, I will open the public comment period. And again, I, I would ask each of the individuals that wish to make comment on this agenda item to keep your comments to three minutes, please, and stay on topic. And as you follow, a comment that has already been previously made, we would ask for, for fresh information for new comments, not simply to rehash the same comment over and over and over. So with that, Zach, I will turn it over for, for you to allow the folks in.
Okay, I'll let, yeah, I'll, I'll let Jared read his email, but in.
Thank you. We, we did receive an email ahead of time. Thank you.
But as he's doing that, I'll just say, if you are wanting to make a comment, if you will, please raise your, click the raise hand button. And once we've read that email into the record, then I can unmute you.
Okay. I will go ahead and read the comment that we did receive. And I have neglected to get her name right on this. Hang on one second. I apologize. Okay, this comment is from Kate Jackman. I don't, it does not give her address. I apologize, but it does say the following. It was emailed this afternoon. "We have lived in the neighborhood north of the subject property for several years. The wide-open space that includes the Tosh Field and the eastern adjacent parking lot is one of the great appeals of this neighborhood. It creates a clear divide between residential and industrial. The proposed construction will infringe on this completely disrupt privacy and impair the quiet beauty of this entire neighborhood. I have worked in the Tosh Building as a staff member and even from that space, I could see into backyards." I could see into backyards of the residential homes from the second and third floor windows. This new structure would further this concern even more. The building will be within yards of homes and patients and staff members will be able to see into backyards and even homes themselves infringing on privacy. I would hate for strangers to be able to view my young children playing in our backyard. It is not only a privacy concern, but it makes me feel completely unsafe. I plead with all of you to stop the current construction plans and consider building on the south side of the hospital instead. There is ample space there to build this ambulatory care center. This would be the best of both worlds because patients would get the care they need without the residents of this neighborhood having a large industrial building within yards of their private homes. There are many industrial buildings along Fashion Boulevard and this would continue that pattern without disrupting the delicate residential area. Thank you." And again, that was, um, emailed today, so.
Okay, thank you. Alright Zach, um, who else do we have?
Alright, we should have Mr. Abada able to, uh, speak to this item.
Mr. Abada, can, if you can hear us, uh, and you're ready to speak, if you would give your, your name and address for the record prior to speaking, I would appreciate it.
It actually, it looks like we might be having a technical problem. It doesn't look like he's connected to audio.
You want to go to one of the other individuals and we can come back to Mr. Abada?
We actually don't have anybody else.
Okay.
Unfortunately, um. Let me see. Hold for me just one moment.
Perhaps he, he could send an email or something as well. I don't know. A message.
I was going to say, well Zach's working that out. I'm just monitoring the emails coming in and we haven't had anything else coming yet, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
Well, I tried sending him a message. Go ahead, sorry.
Do you want me to go in and just send him a participant link?
Um, I, I tried sending him a, a message and it doesn't say that he is in the meeting anymore.
Maybe he had to leave, you know? There we go. There's Eric, there's Mr. Abada.
Okay, we can see him. That's weird. I don't know why.
Can he hear us?
I don't see him in the meeting anymore.
Yeah, he's on my screen.
Participant screen now.
I see him with his cute little girl.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we can't hear him.
Why don't we try and send him a participant link? Do we have, we have his email address, right? Cause you registered?
Yes, most likely. I just have to find that. Hold on.
I can do that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, if you could.
Okay, let me do that.
Sorry for the delay, guys.
That's okay. Rather get it right.
Do you see that he just wrote in the chat that he could hear the whole meeting, but it just went silent?
And also Zach, uh, on my screen, I show a hand up on, uh, Monty Gumbel.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have his hand up anymore.
Oh, okay. He's, yeah, his, his hands up on mine. He's, he's list, he's on the participant screen twice and one of them has a hand up, so.
Monty Gumbel is the representative of E4H, um, so he was with, uh, on with me, Casey Carlton, so I think he's.
Thank you. Thank you. Still nothing, huh?
No.
No. I'm gonna try something else. Let me try doing this.
And I couldn't, he, an email address that was really intuitive for Mr. Abada.
You can have him call in as well and just talk with us over the phone.
I sent him a chat asking to send Zachary an email address.
Okay.
Just now, when you said that. He asked if we could hear him in the chat and I told him. That we can't hear him, that Zach's working on it.
This is weird. We haven't had the, this problem before. I had some, had somebody send me today a meme that said, "I'd like my seven days subscription of 2020 trial subscription to be over." That fits for tonight, too.
But, you know, this is actually Ned's fault because of his comment in the pre-meeting that, uh, this, this would be a very, very quick meeting. So it's on you Ned, it's on you.
That's a tactical assistance. Come on.
Yeah, I, I had someone ask me, uh, the coworker say, "Send me a picture that describes your 2020." And I sent him a picture of when I visited Hell, Michigan that said, "Greetings from hell."
Very good. Very good.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I think, um.
We're, we're trying, we're, we're trying different things here, so we're, we're talking behind the scenes and all that fun.
Yeah, even, even maybe a phone call if there's a way to, uh, just have audio.
Said, um, so, uh, Jared, what we'll do is we'll have, uh, Mr. Abada call into your phone. You can just put it on speakerphone.
Yeah.
So, um, we can put that number, or number in the chat, but it's 801-270-2427. Sorry about this, Aaron.
Looks like he may be talking to Jared already.
I wish I had some, something that I could just have, like, playing in the background for you guys while you wait, while we fit. You know, just some dancing monkeys saying technical difficulties, please.
Hey, this is serious stuff, Zach.
Aaron's gonna call my desk phone, it's got a good speaker on it, and then you'll all be able to hear. Okay?
So does anybody know the score of the Gonzaga and BYU game?
Oh, good. I hear the phone ringing.
Aaron, are you there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, can you guys all hear that okay? Okay, talk loud, Aaron.
Okay, I'll do my best. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Here you go.
...the world happened, but anyways, uh, yeah, I don't wanna rehash anything, but yeah, my major concern is I, my house is directly across the street. Um, we are longtime residents of Murray and always will be. My kids will always go to Macmillan and Hillcrest and Murray. Um, and, I mean, we're less than, I don't know what it was, 180 feet from my front door. Anyways, like I said, I, I mean, I wish I could just make it go away or take the whole second level off, but I'm sure that's not possible. But my major concern is that northeast entrance. Um, I think there's plenty of other ways in, in, in and out, uh, to where they can get by without that. If they're doing deliveries, um, I don't see why that can't be a PM thing. I know that they do a lot of PM deliveries where they can maneuver trucks in and out without a lot of parking. Also, I second the, the, I mean, I don't know why it couldn't be built on the opposite side. It certainly would look a lot more attractive and fit better. In my opinion, it's gonna stick, stick out like a sore thumb on that northeast corner, that whole building there. And like I said, we'll be here for a long time and, uh, I think it could accomplish a lot more and also be closer to the cafeteria and other main areas where people be, where there'll be more foot traffic. But, um, like I said, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic with kids in and out in this whole area in the morning and afternoon. Uh, like I said, I think it would be a lot better on the opposite side, on the south side of Tosh. But anyways, those are my concerns. Those are my comments. I know that the whole neighborhood here pretty much seconds that. We've talked about it. And, uh, we would, we support IHC. We support what they do. Obviously, I've been a patient there many times and I appreciate them and what they do for our community. However, uh, I don't see why it couldn't be accomplished on the opposite side. And certainly at, at least get rid of that northeast entrance. So, thank you for your time. Sorry for the trouble again, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abada. Alright, with that, um, we've not had any additional participation requested? Okay, I, I will close the public comment portion of, uh, of this item and, uh, bring it back up to the commission for, uh, any con, well, I guess we, we could ask the applicant if there was anything in the public comment that they would like to, uh, to comment on with regard to, you know, moving the footprint to the, uh, the south. Uh, and then obviously I think we've discussed that, uh, that entrance, that northeast entrance there. But, um, if you've got any additional comments, uh, Mr. Carlton, about, uh, you know, where the, uh, the facility is located as opposed to, uh, where it could be located?
Uh, just to say that, um, the, you know, I'm, I'm representing the, the architect here, but also the owner. Um, we did look at many options on the campus. Um, we, we took a look at the south side, took a look at, um, a couple of, uh, other orientations on the north side. And, um, this northeast corner was the most advantageous to their, uh, many of their desired, um, uh, outcomes for this campus in looking toward the long-term, also in, in the future plans. Some of those are not necessarily fully known, but keeping a note chair, so to speak, for future development of the, the inspection of the hospital. So that, that was taken into consideration. I, I won't say that, um, that I'd be able to fully, uh, respond to, you know, whether or not they want to look at, uh, changing those plans at this point. But, uh, would take that under advisement. Appreciate the, the comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll, I'll bring it back up to commission members for any questions of, of the applicant again or, or discussion. And if no discussion, a motion if, uh, someone would like, yes Lisa, please.
I just, I just like to say one thing and you got, you know, commission, tell me if you disagree or agree. But I, I just feel like it's important to tell the, um, public that whether we like or dislike or agree with the idea of moving the building to the south, it's not within our power to mandate that. That we, long as a landowner's following the ordinance and the rules established by the city, we can't tell them to build somewhere else. Right? So I, I just want the public to know, we, you know, it's outside of our power.
Appreciate that. Any, any other comments?
Just a general comment that, you know, back when it was Cottonwood Hospital, there was a five-story building there with an emergency room entrance very close to there, as well as a church. So I mean, there's, buildings have been there historically, you know, yes, they haven't been there for the last 10 years, but, but they have been there historically. And I, and I'm, I'm sympathetic to, to wanting the, the privacy in your backyard, but there is one bank of windows on that, or on that north side that is in a patient-only area at the end of a hall. I don't think it's one of those, it's not, you know, a ton of people staring out of a five-story building looking into your yard all the time. I, I, I do appreciate where they're coming from with it, though.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, I guess one that I thought as well, the community can continue to work with the builder and maybe request, or, you know, finally discussions, asking if they can minimize the windows along that side and the builder could discuss it with them. It's just outside of our preview to demand that, but those discussions could occur.
Sure. Alright.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Please Scott.
Now I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction of the proposed ambulatory surgical and recovery center on the property located at 5848 South Fashion Boulevard, subject to conditions one through five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Ned. I have a motion by Scott Woodbury, a second by Ned Hacker, that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction of the proposed ambulatory surgical and recovery center on the property located at 5848 South Fashion Boulevard, subject to conditions one through five as presented in the application. Please call for a vote.
Am I muted? Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Woodbury?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
And Mr. Markham?
Yes.
The, uh, motion passes unanimously and, um, I, I would hope that, uh.
I didn't get, oh, Phil.
Oh, Lisa!
Ms. Motavich, sorry.
I say yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for not making me out to be a liar, Lisa. So, the motion does pass unanimously, uh, belatedly but unanimously. And, um, I would hope that, uh, the, uh, the applicant does take the, the comments that were made tonight to heart and, uh, does try to accommodate as much as possible. It, uh, it, it makes for a nice long-term relationship and this hospital is going to be there for a very long time. I think it would benefit everybody if, uh, you know, we just have a little give and take. Alright, with that, our second, uh, item this evening is, uh, agenda item number five, a subdivision amendment, lot line adjustment for the Abington, uh, commercial subdivision. So Jared, you'll be presenting this?
Yes, thanks. Um, this is, again, just, this is a lot line adjustment, 5377 South State and 1480 5300 South, and I'll explain that a little better in just a moment. The, um, the properties are lots one and four in the Abington subdivision. So, um, these two properties that you can see here in the aerial photograph, uh, the, this, um, Hillcrest, Mill, Murray Hillcrest Commercial Development was done a couple of years ago in 2018. The Town Place Suites are, are under construction, almost open here on the north. And the Abington, whom the subdivision's named after, Abington Assisted Living Facility on the south. Uh, the zoning is CD commercial. In this more recent area, you can see the Town Place Suites building and the Abington building here. Um, there are a couple of pad sites, uh, as well that's part of the subdivision, but the only two lots that are involved are lots one and four. And they're, the way they're involved is along this property line that's connected in the middle here between lots one and four. This is the subdivision and it's on its side here. So again, this is that lot line between the two, lot one and lot four. So this is 53rd South on the, uh, left-hand side. Uh, and as we drill down, I kind of highlighted the area between where this is the platted lot line and that yellow highlighted area is where they would like to move that line that direction and add a little property to the Abington so that the dumpster enclosure that will be, the trash enclosure that'll be right here can be on the Abington's property instead of off-site. What happened was during the process of construction, a few things about the site had to change. Uh, and in doing that, we moved some electrical utilities and we moved the trash enclosure and everyone realized, afterward that we had moved the trash enclosure off of the lot that it was serving. So to correct that, they have to amend the subdivision because it had already been platted and recorded. And state code dictates that if we amend a lot line like that, we have to, uh, we have to bring it to the planning commission for approval to make sure we're not. Small change, CD zoning is very forgiving in terms of setbacks, et cetera, especially between commercial buildings. There are no buffering requirements or serious utilities, but to worry about utilities, which are actually kind of out in the middle of the parking lot, as you can see. So it doesn't really have any impacts and we are recommending that the project be approved with the two conditions that you see.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff concerning this, uh, item? Okay, is, is the applicant present this evening?
I did not see them.
Okay, they, he is, sorry.
Oh, good.
Mr. Kimball.
Mr. Kimball, um, if, uh, you can unmute yourself and, uh, introduce yourself and give us, uh, your name and address and provide any additional information that you would like. and provide any additional information that you would like to, uh, to have the commission hear this evening.
Uh, as, as said, this is Ryan Kimball with Kimball Investment Company and my address is 1000 South Main Street, Salt Lake City, Utah. And Jared summed it up perfectly. Uh, it was just a site adjustment during construction and for long-term financing. That, uh, needs to be on its respective lot.
Well, I can tell you that, uh, that my, my place of employment is going to be very impressed that we had to go through all of this procedure just to accommodate a, a trash receptacle for, uh, for hopefully my company to eventually service this property. We'll have to see down the road, but it's, uh, it's, it's nice to be this important.
Well, you know, garbage pickup seems to be one of those things that you don't think about until you don't have it.
That's exactly right. And we do need it. So are there any questions from the commission for, um, oh, first, uh, Mr. Kimball? I hope you have read the two conditions attached to this and are you able to comply?
I can.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for the, for the applicant concerning this? Okay, seeing none. Uh, I'll open the public comment period for this agenda item. Have we had any emails prior to the, the meeting and is there anyone waiting at this time?
No. If you'd like to make a comment, uh, just raise your hand. Click the raise hand button.
We do not have any prior comments, just so you know.
Thank you, Jared. Okay.
I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand.
Well, with that, I will close the public comment portion of this agenda item and, uh, bring it back up to the commission members for discussion or an amendment, if you see fit. But I, not an amendment, a, a motion, excuse me.
Well, I, I will make, uh, a, a motion. I figure it's my last meeting. I'll just, I'll do it.
Going out strong, Scott.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and making a motion on moving a dumpster is definitely going strong. So, so yeah, Phil, thank you.
I'm gonna have to explain to my boss that I couldn't make the, the motion because I was chairman, you know?
I know. So, so I, I came in in the clutch here, but, um, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the request to amend lots one and four of the Abington subdivision, adjusting the lot line between the properties addressed 148 East, 5300 South and 5377 South State Street as presented and subject to conditions one and two.
Thank you.
I'll gladly second.
Thank you, Travis. I have a motion by Scott Woodbury, a second by Travis Nay, that the planning commission approve the request to amend lots one and four of the Abington subdivision, adjusting the lot line between the properties addressed 148 East, 5300 South and 5377 South State Street as presented and subject to conditions one and two attached to the presentation, to, to the application. Please call for a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Woodbury?
Uh, yes, sirree.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Markham?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously and, uh, we look forward to, uh, to this facility opening. It's a beautiful entrance off of State Street. I must tell you, um, it's, it's just beautiful to drive by and it looks very inviting, that, uh, that turnaround right there in the main entrance. So good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, um, is there anything that staff would like to add, uh, before I call for adjournment this evening? Any additional information?
You know, the only, the only thing that I, I would coming up, Chairman, Chairman Markham and Vice Chairman Woodbury will not be in attendance. It's, it's a new, well, I, I don't know, maybe you will be there, but that meeting will need to choose a new chair and vice chair for the commission. So.
Well, I was hoping we would get to do it now.
Well, we didn't put it on an agenda, so we do it now without. Jared, if you want to attend and watch that, you're welcome to.
I, I did, I did remember the other, uh, piece of property that has some action going on it that I was asked by a resident. It's the old Murray Manor Building on 5600 South and what, about 4th East? There's a lot of remodeling going on there. Is, is that just, is, are they apartments now?
Oh, sorry. The, yeah, okay. Oh, yes. In fact, it is. It's a conversion to apartment. So the, uh, the, the bottom floor had a large office space in it, a large office area. So what they've done is the, the number of units has not increased, but they've converted the whole building and for apartment use again and the bottom floor as well. So the number of units has stayed the same, but they've all gotten bigger. And there's some really interesting layouts in there. That's a fun floor plan to look at because they've just, the outside of the building is staying exactly the same. But they're really doing some interesting things with the apartments inside. There is a, there is one apartment that is five bedrooms, I believe. It'll be the only five-bedroom apartment that I've seen come through ever. So it's kind of interesting.
Yeah, I, I believe the, uh, the owners at one time used it as kind of like a, a second home when they were in town here. Uh, so that, that would explain that large space. But so there was, there's no, no change of use technically or anything. So no reason to come before the planning commission.
Nope, still multifamily. It won't be senior restricted anymore. I think it was senior apartments at one time. It won't be senior restricted anymore and they are increasing the number of bedrooms and just kind of the general openness of the floor plans of all the units, but they're staying the same number of units.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry to, to get off track there a little bit.
Glad you remembered.
Is, is there anything else that anybody has this evening before we adjourn?
I just want to say before we adjourn, thanks to Scott and Phil on the record. And thank you for how kind and welcoming you were when I came onto the commission and how much you've taught me, how much I've learned from you. And it's been an honor. It's been an absolute honor.
Well, you know, we've, we've got, um, a, a real interesting makeup on this commission and I think all of us have learned a lot from all of the different perspectives that people bring to each of these meetings. And, um, I, I have learned so much from so many different people over the years. But I will say that this, this makeup of, uh, the commission that we've had for the last couple of years has, has by far been the most enjoyable. Um, we're civil to each other, which you don't always see in government anymore. Um, I go to these meetings occasionally for work and it's not common for people to get along like we do. And it's highly uncommon for us to have dissenting opinions. And I don't, I'm not saying that's good or bad, but I think it just shows how we're willing to listen and reason through things and I've really appreciated that.
Yeah, I agree, Phil, and thank you for, you know, well said. Um, you know, it's wonderful. It's, it's great to serve and be involved and you know, it's a great commission. You know, I've learned just like Phil from, from each one of you and all the people we've served with and, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a fun, it's a fun thing to be involved. I, you know, I'd encourage all citizens to, you know, be involved. You know, you learn a lot about how things work. I didn't know how the city worked as much, uh, my perspective, my compassion for and my empathy for the city and for issues and for neighbors and things has grown because of my involvement on this side. I see the work that the city does and I, and I, I see how important all the different roles are and, and that it's, you know, the city really, really tries to do what's best and to balance, you know, the opinions and the needs and the, you know, be forward-looking, but still preserve the past. And you know, it's an amazing, amazing job and the fact that we can help, you know, Jared and, and Melinda and Zach and, you know, Brad and, and everyone that's been involved over the last nine years has, has been awesome. So thank you, thank you, everyone, and I look forward to, you know, coming back in person and Phil and I will be there on the back row, the first meeting back in person and, uh, you know, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll definitely make some comments. Maybe we'll go get Jim Harlan and, and we'll just, you know, make.
I'll get you a sweater vest and we'll, we'll sit there and, uh, we'll just, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll grump away.
Exactly, exactly. We'll, we'll do that. And, and so anyway, but thank you, everybody. You've made it enjoyable and, um, you know, it'll be great. So thank you.
And you know what? Thanks to staff. I, I, the reason, the, the big reason this does go so smoothly is we have all the information that we need to make an intelligent, defendable decision.
And even if it's not intelligent, it's still defendable.
Very few problems and, uh, or have been overturned by the council and that is entirely their prerogative. They can do that anytime they want, but I think that it really is rather rare for that to happen. And that speaks volumes of how we are prepared and how, how we can make our decisions. So with that, I'm not going to run on anymore. I, I would like to, uh, have a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we adjourn.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thanks, folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Ciao, kids.
So much. Yeah, you guys will be great. I may watch next meeting just so I can be the chair, all right? Getting ready to nominate someone and.
You know, you could come on and just keep raising your hands, Scott, all the time.
But the problem is that's just gonna, I mean, that could be a 15-minute delay in the meeting if I keep doing that. So.
I still want to hear your opinion.
But you only get three minutes.
If I take three minutes on every item.
That's right.
You know, some days that could give me a half hour. So, I mean, yeah, this will be good. Plus, if I send in emails and, no, I, we'll figure it out. If Phil's speaking for a group or we make sure we're not talking about the same thing, yeah, we could, we could string these meetings out really long if we want.
On the fact that we're doing this remotely, Scott, you can, you can be anywhere in the country and still participate.
Yeah, I, I, I told Maren, she said, what are you gonna do on your Thursdays? I said, I'll probably go, you know, snuggle up with the wife on the couch and get some treats and just watch the planning commission. I mean, is there anything more romantic than that?
And entertaining.
And and with that, I'm ending all this meeting.
Thank you.